Hopefully this evening you're going to be able to hear some very definitive answers to some probing questions. Where all six candidates will share their thoughts. Not in a philosophical sense, but in a concrete sense of what they would or would not do. We'll probably talk about fracking, we'll probably talk about fests, we'll probably talk about infrastructure, all of those things you can expect in the candidates forum. But quite honestly, none of that is really important unless we take care of one group in our community. And that's the children of this community. If we can't take care of our children, doesn't matter if fests and fracking and things like that, we haven't taken care of, I guess what I'd call the least among us. Two requests, listen closely tonight, pick the best three candidates, but before you make that choice two weeks from today, check yes for issue one, and let's take care of our children. And I would hope and I would think the other five candidates up here would agree with that thought. Again, my name is Alan Swinek, I'm a 36-year resident of Athens. Came here in 1979 for what was to be one year graduate school. One turned to two as it does for so many Ohio University students. Two turned to five, couple of kids, three grandkids, and Athens is now home. What have I done? What are the characteristics that I could present today to show leadership which is required in council? I'll outline four. When my daughter was in first grade, I was vice president of East PTO. That was a full-time job. From there, I moved on to the three-term presidency of the Green and White Club and helped grow that organization to almost 1,000 memberships. Then I was a two-term president of FINA, Far East Side Neighborhood Association, and most recently for the last nine years, I've managed to unit our company that's larger than the city of Athens. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for always hosting these forums. I've attended quite a few as an interested community member and an Athens voter. I'm glad to join the other candidates tonight in sharing our passions and ideas for Athens. I'm a modest person and an introvert, so campaigning for public office has provided me with new challenges. But I realized recently that campaigning for public office is not unlike a job interview, albeit a job interview with many potential supervisors. You hired me for the position of Athens City Council Member-at-Large two years ago, and I hope that you will vote to reelect me to that position this spring. I was born in Athens at O'Glennis Hospital because it was a progressive institution, being the only hospital in southeastern Ohio to allow men in the delivery room at the time. I grew up in Jackson, Ohio. I earned a bachelor's degree in journalism from Otterby College, a master's degree in international affairs from Ohio University, and an occupational certificate from Hawking College in massage therapy. After spending time in big cities and overseas, I decided to come home to Ohio, and Athens is the place I chose to call home. This is the place where I have chosen to raise a family and build community. As a servant leader, I lead through service. I'm always happy to roll up my sleeves and get a little dirty cleaning our city, pulling garlic mustard with someone like Bill Cantino, or planting trees. Sunday after running my first half marathon, I refuel before heading out with my son to mulch and weed the beds right out front here, along with local Girl Scouts, project plant volunteers, Ohio University students, and others as part of the annual Athens Beautification Day. I began my career in community service as a student leader and have served as an AmeriCorps Vista and Peace Corps volunteer. In my years in Athens, I've served as past president of Friends of the Athens Public Library, a Leche League leader, a board member for Live Healthy Appalachia, and a volunteer with numerous other community organizations. As a city council member, I serve on several commissions and several committees. Thank you.
My name is Joan Krenansky, I reside at 56th Mountain Street. I have two delightful daughters who attended Athens High School and graduated from Ohio University. I'm also blessed with two wonderful grandchildren. I hold a Bachelor of Arts in Anthropology and a Master of Arts in International Studies. I was one of the founding members of Westside Community Association and have served as its co-chair and treasurer. As an active member of this neighborhood association, I have worked on and supported projects that have had a positive result citywide, including extending sidewalks on Columbus Road, graffiti and litter removal, wellhead protection, plan initiative, building the Schaefer Street Brick Wall, and landscaping at Arts West. I have been a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for six years and have served on several city council ad hoc committees. My work on the board and the committees has strengthened my understanding of the Athens City Code, kept me informed of changing conditions in Athens, and allowed me to develop a working relationship with the city administration. I was a workroom owner of Crumbs Bakery for five years and served as general manager and bookkeeper for three of those years. I have volunteered for Democratic election campaigns and local initiatives. My platform includes citizen-involved planning, protecting vital neighborhoods, and supporting smart business. I recently retired from Ohio University, and I would like to commit my time, experience, and expertise to public service as your city council at-large representative.
I have a long history of working for the city and the county of Athens. I started in 1983 by helping to push the county commissioners to finally realize Dave Brennan's dream of a bicycle path from Athens to Nelsonville. I have been on the bikeway advisory committee since it finally started. I was on the Board of Directors of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau for 12 years, serving as the treasurer and the president. At the end of my term, I took a position as financial advisor. I was also on the Board of Directors for Enterprise Development Corporation for 18 years, where I was the treasurer for 12 of those years. EDC was a small business administrator that handled 33 counties in Ohio. They oversaw the administration of Athens County and city revolving loan funds, and as a member of the board, we would go over each one of the loans and decide whether they were going to work or not. I have close ties to the city engineers office through work with Bob Eichenberg and then later with Andy Stone. We've worked together on pedestrian and bicycle plans. I have been on city council's transportation committee for five years. I raised two sons here. They went from west elementary school through high school. One of whom went on to get his degree at OU. I have a bachelor's degree at OU, and I've recently completed a master's in counseling, again from OU. I have owned and operated Cyclopath Bicycle Shop at the same location in Athens since 1983.
My name is Peter Kotzis. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born here, raised here, and I believe it's an interesting perspective because I can probably count on my hands how many people from my high school graduating class were able to make a living here and stay here. Been in business, I worked for Max, I employed Alons. It's a small town, isn't it, you know everybody? The skill set that I learned from being in business, it's important. I always talk with my employees about the power of small business, and I try to tell other people too about that. When I first opened up, it wasn't something that I really thought about, but after a while, we realized it provided jobs and provided service. What really did it for me was five years ago when we purchased a building that was an ISO, it was exempted, it sat on Simpson Avenue. We took it and rehabbed it and repurposed it to reuse, but at the same time, kept the history of it. We could retain some of that heritage and still teach people about what our area was like 100 years ago when the Athens Brick Company was a major employer. So that, along with my being a good steward of the community, and all the volunteer work that I have done, that makes me an extremely strong candidate.
Say good evening, I'm Ethan Mike Cannaberry, and I am a candidate running to retain my seat on the Athens City Council at Large. Want to thank the Athenian voters for being here and watching this forum at home. I have lived and worked here for close to 35 years. Retired from the Athens County Engineers Department, my employment with the Athens County Engineers Department included grant writing, contract writing, putting the specs together for bids on roads and bridge projects, as well as equipment. I'm a certified bridge inspector for Road Dot. I was instrumental in the development of GIS for Athens County and ABL for RV units. I've been married for 35 years, I have two children, a son and a daughter, both serving in the United States Air Force, and three grandchildren. I was a board member and past president of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission, the Athens County Local Emergency Planning Commission, former SEEMS, Tri-County Community Action Agency, Athens Local 103, and a NIM certified. From these groups, I have learned the skills in the following areas of collaboration, policy development, being a good listener, and I learned an eclectic approach to problem solving. I will stand up for my convictions on the city council and for the concerns of citizens of Athens. I'm willing to retain my seat on Athens City Council because I care and I have a passion for the youth, the citizens of Athens. I want our development, redevelopment, and revitalization challenges to be carefully managed using sustainable building practices. I want to make sure with our growth that it is a smart growth, environmentally friendly, preserving our open spaces with parks and recreation trails. We have a contract upcoming with AEP on the trimming of trees, and I want to help implement the best practice for this and work with language that benefits the city of Athens and its residents. And to continue to work with Athens and its residents and our ancient infrastructure with the water, its turbines, appropriately fixing potholes, and repairing and replacing our sidewalks correctly through our neighborhoods.
Alexandra Newman from the New Political.
Mine's such a harder. What is your biggest strength and how will you use it as a member of city council? And what is your biggest weakness and how will you overcome it as a member of city council?
I always like to end on a positive, so I'm going to do the weakness first, if that's okay. I come from a family, mother and father neither of whom graduated from college. I took them to school for a semester. My mother was valedictorian of her class, the Hills of southwestern Kentucky. My father was fourth in his class, but they valued education. Fifth grade, I got a C in handwriting. First and only C I ever got. And for six weeks, I sat at that table and practiced my handwriting, till it became acceptable to my mother. I think what was instilled in me through that lesson was excellence is expected. Sometimes I confuse trying with excellence. Nobody fails on purpose. Terry and I each have a doc of 12 things we want to do this year, and one of them is to be more tolerant. So being brutally honest, that is my greatest weakness, but I'm working on it. Strengths? I don't look at problems, I look at issues as opportunities, positive side of things. We have this issue, what can we do with it to better our neighborhoods and our city?
I believe one of my greatest strengths, and that is listening and communication. I've learned early on when campaigning that it's important to put others' opinions before your own, because we all have opinions and we're all eager to share them, but what matters is representing the opinions of other people. And so sometimes my opinions need to take a backseat. I'm able to listen and hear other perspectives and consider all sides of an issue. As far as weakness goes, sometimes I can be a little overeager to get certain things done, and in my eagerness, I can neglect proper procedures. I might step on a few toes every now and then, or forget to dot the i's and cross the t's. So eagerness can sometimes be a weakness for me.
I think that I am a competent mediator. Often, I get stuck in situations where two people are batting heads. Many cases have been able to diffuse the situation. I also like to dig deep into an issue rather than just looking at the surface and saying it looks okay. I'm going to ask the question, why? Why shouldn't we do it, or why should we do it? And do some research so that I have a full breadth of the picture. Weaknesses, I'm not going to admit to anything. I do tend to overcommit myself. I say, oh, okay, I'll do it. And that is really a bad thing, because whatever gets shoved down to the bottom of the list is not going to get completed, and then I'm going to feel guilty.
One of my biggest strengths is my ability to problem solve, look at things from multiple perspectives, try to engage a lot of different people's opinions, consolidate it in total. And I think also that my record of integrity in the workplace has been one of my biggest strengths. Weaknesses? I get very involved and very myopic sometimes. Can be a bad time management person.
The biggest thing for me is I know this town. Conversations that I've had in the last few months, I had one with Bill Bias, and Bill's in the 80s. You know, I was fighting for brick streets, and I said, I was there, I grew up on Elm Place, they were, tear that up and do a sewer project, they were going to pave it. That didn't happen, you know, thanks to Bill. I had a meeting here at the community center with Andrew Chickie, and he was going through the process at the university when they were building the Fing Center and closing people out of Grover. He voted for that, we needed a community center, and I said, I voted for that. It's exciting to have the opportunity to make further the progress of this city. My weakness is, I am taking a crash course right now, trying to figure out everything that the city needs. There are a lot of people out there that are willing to help, that's what I've come across and I've been extremely surprised to find in this whole process. Going to help me with learning curve, bridging that gap, so that I feel like that's probably my biggest challenge.
One of the things I can bring to council is many years' experience that I have in grant writing, contract writing, and the implementation of projects that I was involved in. We look at a lot of things that are happening in the city of Athens right now, the infrastructures that we're doing, Richmond Avenue project is going on, the upcoming Simpson Avenue project, I mean East State Street project. And I look at plans, I know what I'm looking at, I know what the details are, and I can present my opinions to it and raise the concerns that need to be raised with it. I'm able to look at the cost estimates, and I'm able to determine whether that cost is too low or whether it's too hot. Weaknesses? I commit myself too much, I actually run out of time.
Connor Morris, the Athens News, the current version.
At this last November's election, the voters approved a ban on fracking, oil and gas drilling, fracking and related activities within the city limits. Would you support the Athens fracking ban in the face of a legal challenge from somebody who would wish to have a oil and gas driven operation within the city? If so, to what extent would you be willing to expend city resources to fight such litigation?
Well, I have a daughter that lives in Oklahoma City. They started fracking many years ago there, and problems that she's facing right now is the earthquakes that they're having out there, which is numerous, that you really hardly ever read about. She's had numerous water lines that have been broken in her property. And yes, I'm against fracking, I said, because I'm concerned about our drinking water, and water is life, and so we have to have that. From the city council standpoint, I would allow my law director for our legal advice. She tells us, don't fight it then, I have to listen to her, and that's what we would do. And myself, yes, I would add anything to that.
I'm also against fracking, especially within the city limits. There has been no proven safety for disposal of waste and the chemicals used for the fracturing. There has been seismic activity demonstrated. This town has voted not to have fracking. The people of the city have made it clear, they don't want it. So of course, I would listen to the citizens of the city.
As a council member, it's very, very important that we balance our own personal, moral, and ethical beliefs with what is the law. Might hit the nail on the head, neither one of us are attorneys. We would need to defer to the city law director as to, one, the chances of that suit passing, and secondly, the cost to the taxpayers. And what puzzles and amazes me more than anything, why aren't we even talking about fracking? Why aren't we talking about renewable energy? Why are we drilling everywhere when we should be using solar like we use over here, or perhaps wind like I saw in a wind farm in Pennsylvania? For the immediate future though, we need to eliminate the picture I saw when I drove back from Pennsylvania. Four large trucks filled with brine headed for Athens County. There's absolutely no reason why Athens County should be the septic tank for Pennsylvania or anywhere else. Fracking, not my cup of tea, but I'm going to have to balance those feelings with what the law director said we should do.
Right off the bat, water protection is key. If it's coming down the pipe, we have to do whatever we can to protect our environment. I don't know what we are able to do as city council. One of the things I've learned so far is we don't have a ton of power. We might not be the group that's going to be able to do it, but there are a lot of community members, I would lean heavily on Heather Cantino and her group, really help us with legal. We need to just kind of band together and try to figure out what type of avenues that we have. The injection wells scare me the most. We didn't want the trash from New York City, so why are we taking this stuff, which seems to be a lot more caustic?
I'm totally opposed to hydraulic fracking. The injection wells, water is such a valuable resource. If a proposal was presented to city council and the law director said, I think that we're not going to be able to go forward with this to prevent this particular event from happening, I believe many people on city council would work their butt off to find an alternative way to go about doing it. Because where there is a will, there is always a way to get to the right answer. Having lived in West Virginia for many years, on a primitive farm in Hall Water, until you've done that, I think it would be hard to imagine how precious every little drop is and how little you want to waste. And yet, we're allowing these companies to come in and perhaps waste our water. I'm willing to follow the law, but I'm willing to go the extra mile.
I'm the geek that pointed out our city well field as we ran past it Sunday morning. I'm the child of parents who successfully fought off an injection well in southeastern Ohio when I was just a toddler. I've dragged these two to countless protests and will continue to do so when necessary. This is an issue on which I do not see balance. If our bill of rights is challenged, because we did not simply pass a ban on fracking, we passed a bill of rights declaring our right as citizens to clean water. We have a primacy of rights in that department. There comes a time where we have to stand up and say these laws are unjust because our state laws are not protecting us. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources is not protecting our natural resources. So we as citizens have declared our rights, and we will protect those rights despite what the law may say. Any expenditure may be necessary on this end. Fiscal responsibility takes a backseat to protecting our water supply and our future.
Sarah Rootfield of the Athens Messenger. If elected to council, is there a specific area of expertise or committee that you would prefer to work on?
Conversations that I've had so far, parks and rec, mostly because I utilize a lot of the services with my seven-year-old daughter. I spent a lot of time bringing the trail system that we currently have to fruition. I sat on the board. I was asked by Mayor Rick Abel to be on a board. Got all the property across the street connected. My business background, working with numbers, keep my system afloat, I can easily transfer a lot of that. I feel that I can definitely offer some help there. Really need to lean on everybody else to have them help guide me.
As you probably know, I serve on the city council transportation committee, as well as the service and safety committee, the Athens Shade Tree Commission, the Environment and Sustainability Commission, and the Buckeye Hills Regional Transportation Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Board. When I began as a city council member, I certainly did not see myself as an expert on transportation or city services and safety. But this is a learning experience. We all go from being citizens to being more active participants in our local government. My passion for active transportation has led me to being an active member of our transportation committee and actively advocating every step of the way for more sidewalks, more lanes of bikeway, more access to people who are using alternative means of transportation and public transit in our city. You could say transportation has become a passion for me, and I'm excited to see our city becoming ever more friendly to people who are walking, bicycling, getting around, any way they can.
Actually, again, the call for multiple commitment, actually, I don't have enough time to do that, to honestly work on each one, but I'm also one of the service safety committee, along with Steve Patterson, who often runs for mayor. I want to go back to something on the brine. A lot of people may not know this, back in the early 90s, we used to actually put brine on our roadways in Athens County. It was instrumental in working with Roxanne Roth to stop this practice, and we did. We stopped using cinders on our roadways because of the big plume of coal dust that would rise from it. So there's a lot of things that, environmentally friendly, that we tried to do within the county that was implemented. Brine on roads, this is a very bad thing then, and now we're injecting them into wells. That's going to destroy our drinking water. These are things I'm passionate about. I also was one of the first ones that took a culvert out, out of Lad Ridge before the lady barricaded herself to stop the flow of brine water, and was ordered to have to put it back in, just because we're very passionate about that.
Oh, it's my history of being on a lot of different government committees and boards of directors. My first passion would be the finance committee. I'm also a big advocate of the sports and rec department and the arts. I have to see what the different places are. The finance would be my first target, but I would not give up the transportation committee.
Your question is kind of like asking a kid what's on your Christmas wish list. You know you can't have it all, but you'd like to. As a council person, you serve a lot of constituencies, and you put your finger in a lot of different pots. But after spending some time on the city website the last week and delving into the essence of Athens Project, I think that would probably be my first interest and focus at this point in time. I guess I didn't really understand what that Essence Athens Project was until I watched and reread and watched again and picked up this statement. Strategic design plan for economic enhancement, community competitiveness. We've all agreed, any community can be enhanced a bit, whether it's better sidewalks, turning this into a 25 mile an hour zone out here. And anytime you have competitiveness, all parties get better. The first question was asked us today, what is your strength? And I got a third of the way through that. But I think my strength as it relates to this is identifying the opportunity, developing the plan, and executing the solution. And with this guideline in the Essence of Athens, that's a challenge I'd like to undertake.
I have looked at the city web page a gazillion times, and I totally blanked out. Sometimes you can know too much, but planning and development. Planning is crucial, everything else flows from it, development within the neighborhoods via the code, through small businesses. That would be my preference, but I would be more than willing and probably somewhat qualified to fill whatever vacant position came in wait.
Susan Tevin of WUV. Question actually touches on something that Mr. Cannaberry has been talking about, which is the infrastructure. We've been seeing a lot of work on Richmond Avenue, other places, obviously the winters brought potholes. So I wanted to see what your thoughts are on improving or maintaining the infrastructure that we know is aging in the city of Athens.
That's actually happening right in my backyard. The infrastructure is truly an issue, obviously nationwide infrastructure within our city. I sometimes think of public works as busy little bees or happy little ants because they're out there working all the time. A lot of the bigger projects have been more in the focus, the Columbus Road, Richmond Avenue, Union Street, and these consume a lot of money, and they are at least as important as smaller infrastructure problems in some of the neighborhoods. I'm walking the neighborhoods and talking to people. The question is how to spread the money and set priorities. I would have to be on city council looking at the budget.
The ideas and the concepts that are in the city's comprehensive plan and in the Essence of Athens, there are long-term goals that I've talked to Andy Stone in the engineering department, and they are trying, they're constantly trying to catch up to the needs of this town and the 100-year-old infrastructure. I know everybody that I've talked to who's going through neighborhoods, it's like, well, yeah, but I've been waiting for years for my street to be done. If more people went on the city's websites, they could look and see there are estimated times available for when they believe they're going to be able to get different sections of the city repaved, potholes, drainage, sewer system. It's a constant fight because everything is so old and needs repair. If we can just keep moving forward and have someone like Andy Stone who can keep getting grants and be able to afford these things, it takes time, but it's getting done.
I believe that Andy Stone is doing the best he can with what he has. The city is trying to work with what they have, but the pot, it's not getting any bigger. You have to get creative. All you can do is just hope that you don't have the big failure, and then all of a sudden you're going backwards, fixing something that just gave out before you had a chance to get to it. The engineer department is doing a great job. The issue that we have here is everybody sees the potholes because they're on the surface. It's hard sometimes to go in and just fix the potholes when you know that you're doing a complete street repaving in another year. So I drive up and down Madison all the time, and does a number on things. As time goes on, you will get that stuff addressed.
It all starts with a plan. Roadways wasn't planned, they just happened. They started out with the wall, trail with the horse and the buggy. So the base of these roadways was not there to handle the type of traffic that we have today. Talking with Andy, working with him, and planning and trying to help balance different projects. What he's trying to do is get the water, the sewer lines replaced, then put the base into the road, then do the project in a whole. That way, we don't have to go back, and all of a sudden, we pave a road, or we concrete a road, and then it deteriorates because we didn't do the sewer line, or we didn't replace the water line. There's only so much money to deal with. Apply for grants, there's only matching funds that you have. But anymore, the splits are getting bigger because the state, the federal governments, when you're going for these grants, the cost allocation are tough to get.
We do have a five-year capital improvement plan. We're about due for... We're about due for a review of that plan. When I first ran for council and was hearing about potholes, I'm happy that we now do have a plan in place and I'm not taking credit for that plan. That plan is a result of our excellent work coming out of our Public Works Department. Our city administration does an excellent job of leveraging resources to be able to accomplish major projects, whether it's Richland Avenue or the upcoming East State Street improvements, which I'm very excited about because it's a spot that I walk on daily, I drive on daily, I cross the street with my children and worry for their safety. A lot of these resources, we have called grants, but they're not really grants. Our tax dollars that we need to get back into this community, they're called grants, but they're the gas tax dollars. That's money that we're entitled to and we need that money to improve our infrastructure. So I look forward to continuing to work with the city administration on reviewing and revising our five-year capital improvement plan.
This is a topic we have around our dinner table on a very, very regular basis, the condition of the town. Remember back in the late 80s, early 90s, I visited my brother in Dallas, Texas, in a section of town with these big McMansions. And I'd say, wow, that's a nice house. My brother would say, so? And I'm like, what do you mean so? He says, there's no furniture in that house. We refer to those people as house poor. Our people who work on our infrastructure do the best job they can with the resources available. What we have to stop doing though is building things we can't take care of. We put in a great roundabout and had a great plan, we thought, but now the landscaping, we can't keep up with. It would be a full-time job for several people. Probably put the wrong bushes in. We found that out last weekend on beautification day. Get those bushes out, put some bushes in that don't require the amount of time and energy, we'll be able to keep up with it. I'm not talking about repairing it. We can't go on a deferred maintenance plan 20 years from now, everything fall in. But before we build anything else, we need to put in the budget, a plan, to be able to take care of it. If we can do that, I think we can keep up with the personnel we have.
Since now time for questions from the audience. What are your priorities in terms of long-term planning for the city of Athens?
Long-term planning, we need to look at where we want to be as a city. For me, one of the major priorities, again, is transportation and accessibility for folks who are using alternate means of transportation. We need to acknowledge and celebrate those who use their own two feet or bicycles or public transit. I would like to celebrate the work that our current mayor has done at a recent presentation by Athens Transit about the growth in ridership. I'm eager to maybe ride the bus tomorrow in celebration of Earth Day. Transportation is a major priority for me, continuing to improve infrastructure wherever we can and using the complete streets model. The Athens Farmer's Market is another major important issue for the long-term health and wellness of our community.
I would like to be revisiting the master plan. It's been a while since it came out. Code, code needs to be revisited. The way that we build cities now is different. We have to keep up with the other cities. Everybody talks about how Athens is a transient town. Students, yes, they come in four, five, six years and they're gone. It's the same with families too. My dad came here in 69, gone by 96 after he put his 30 years and found that there were other places that he wanted to go. We lost that community. That happens a little bit more often here. I'd like to figure out how we can encourage a multi-generational community. That's important for families, for children. I know that my daughter enjoys her, I am a mom who lives only a couple blocks away. I see the struggles of people don't have those families close by.
I want to look at making sure that our growth is smart growth, environmentally friendly. I've heard a lot of comments, as I walk in the streets and I'm listening and talking with the constituents, things that the seniors are talking to me about, work with Michelle on the buses, buses that are called boyriders, which are more senior-friendly, they're more handicapped accessible. We're wanting to look at sidewalks because they're having problems when they're walking on sidewalks. Street lighting on our city streets, I said, you go some places, you may have a street light on the corner or there may not be a street light at all. And some of the senior citizens that like to walk in the evenings are scared of it because they can't see and they're scared that the sidewalks are in such disarray. They're going to trip and fall and, you know, as brittle bones go, they tend to break. These are things that I want to look at and work with.
A planning group or consortium needs to come together in the city of Athens to create a vision of how we see Athens in 10 years, to allow the city to bring into the city those things that we have envisioned for our city, rather than having things plopped in. It's kind of like spot zoning. We see a lot of this spot this and spot that and this comes into community and the community doesn't like it. It comes in downtown, downtown. Maybe merchants or residents disagree with it. A visionary plan. We can create the town via the plan rather than have bits and pieces dropped into our town and sometimes we end up with mishmash. The planning process needs to include many diverse parts of the citizenry as is possible.
First place I'd start is the city pool. We only build these once every 40 or 50 years. We need to get this one right. It needs to serve everybody from seniors and others who want to lap swim, let a little three-year-old for the first time can let go of mom or dad's hand and stand and play in the water. So let's start with the pool. Secondly, the farmer's market. I would bet cash money that half the people in this room, when they have a visitor from out of town, one of the first places they take them and one of the places they're most proud of is our farmer's market and rightfully so. We're running out of time at the mall. We need a solution. Third thing would be what we're going to do with the West Union Street Fire District. I have some very specific plans for what I would like to do and hopefully we'll get to those later in this discussion. But we need to make that a viable place because it's a viable part of our uptown area. I think we need to improve communications and relations with Ohio University and that includes sharing resources. Do we need two police departments? I don't know. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. As part of that planning, perhaps we need to take a look at that. We supplied the fire service. They gave us $50,000 for a truck and we'll continue to do that. Are there other resources that we can share with the university? And finally, something very, very simple. Most of you have texts, get texts. I would love when we have a boiler, that a text goes out to the entire city. That you shouldn't drink the water today if you happen to live on this street. Or on those days when trash is delayed, so we don't have trash sitting out a day late or a day early.
My priorities for long-term would be the maintenance of the health and the welfare of the community, of wellhead protection plans, and to make sure that we don't have fracking waste put dumped in our water. I know it's, nobody wants it in their backyard, but we don't want it in our backyard for sure. There are development plans for the city of Athens that have been out for a while and they do need to be revisited, but I think they're moving in a positive direction. The Essence of Athens is a long-term, long-range plan that is being followed and they're trying to implement suggestions within the Essence of Athens. These are positive developments, the community input for the swimming pool. And on my walking tours of the city, I have had a lot of people ask me, I put my taxes in for this, when is it going to happen? And it's a long process, but at least we can say that there are plans being developed. And as long as we can have community forums and town halls, I think we'll be okay.
Our next question from the audience, what do you think about the pool? Pool, oh, well.
The pool.
Yeah, pool. You know, suddenly we'll need to practice their handwriting and I'm the first to say, like Alan, I shouldn't sit and practice my handwriting, so, okay, pool. That's a no. Okay, what do you think about the pool? And that goes first to Alan.
Kind of hit on that.
You want to elaborate?
Let me put it in these terms. In 1981, if you haven't figured out by now, I used to be a history teacher. In 1981, I started playing softball in this town. Played for the Catsden team, well, back then it was the Little Ritz, the Little Ritz team. At that point in time, there were 18 teams in the men's league. There were another 12 teams in the men's over 35 league. Bruce is back there nodding his head. There was also a women's league and there was also a co-ed league. And if I'm not mistaken, we had a church league too. So you add up all those teams, you had well over 40 or 50 teams. Today in Athens, there is one league. My son-in-law plays in it. And my granddaughter calls it, well, that's boys and girls playing together. It's a co-ed league. What happened to participation and recreation in Athens, Ohio? This pool, which we won't get another one for 40 or 50 years, it's very important that we meet everybody's needs, particularly the young. Because if we get kids exercising when they're little, they're going to be in much better shape when they're old. So that's what I think about the pool. It's important and I'll buy a membership, once I get a little tan on me.
Okay. Mike, the pool, what the hell, what do you think about it?
I've studied on several meetings with task forces looking at the pool. Again, we had a public forum on the pool where participants came in and gave their school what they would like to see. Again, the ones I played, the cost of the money. So what the committee is trying to do now, we're trying to look and collaborate between all the ideas that this gave and put those together to come up with a good plan so that we can present to the city. And I'm all for the pool because, you know, when you drive down through here or you come down through here and you see the pool that we have right now and people that attend it, it's very full most of the time. But you've got to keep the interest of the kids because they get very bored very quickly. So just have patience because it is being worked on, it is being done. It's just a process, it's just a matter of time. Thank you.
John?
Well, I'm a big fan of our current pool. My grandchildren come in the summer, I take them to swimming lessons. They love the pool. I think the most important thing is that whatever we construct inside, outside, both recreational, lane swimming, that we make sure we have sufficient funds to hire a contractor who will do us a stellar job. This pool has lasted a long time and many things today are built to terminate much quicker than 30 years ago, 40 years ago. So whatever comes out of this pool scenario inside, outside, let's just make sure we build the best we can build. Thank you.
Jennifer?
P O O L. So I think the pool is very important as a parent and as a community member who swims for recreation and fitness. And it's important to the health of our community and we're going to get one soon, so I'm very excited about that. I also realize we're not going to please everybody. I was not in Athens when this community center was built. But I know that there were a lot of different ideas that went into this and there were some ideas that were not actualized, were not accomplished. The same is going to happen with our pool, like it or not. We're probably not going to get a wave pool. We're probably not going to get, you know, as many water slides as some would like. But we're going to get a good pool and it's going to accommodate a lot of different people from our community, everybody who wants to use it. And it's going to be a good site, better than what we currently have. So I'm excited about that. I would like to see continued public participation and input in the process. I know that we have several members of the Arts, Parks, and Rec Advisory Board in the room. So talk to them and share your opinions because your opinions matter.
Maxie?
Well, it's hard to, I'm very much new to what's been said. Yes, we need a pool and during the summer, we really need a pool. Because you want your children to be outside and be active and not sitting inside because it's too hot to go outside to play. And this is one of the best forms of recreation for children during the heat in the summer because it just, it keeps them moving and it's joyful. We do need a pool and as most of the people here agree, we need the best pool that we can afford. And I know that limits things and not everybody's going to be happy with what is the final project, but like the community center, there are a lot of people that do use this center and I'm sure there will be a lot of people that use the pool.
And Peter?
Okay. Well, thank you for such an important question. I'll tell you, I do enjoy the pool. I guess if anybody wants a takeaway from tonight, I do love the pool. There's probably just two points that I want to probably just add to this one because I think across the board, everybody's probably already said everything. One is, these projects are kind of icing on the cake and it's something that you can look forward and say, if we do do this right, this can be an attractor for people. You know, it can be a make or break sometimes when someone's looking to move into the community. So if we do it correctly, there's a good chance that we can help secure, you know, best people for our community. The second thing is, and I, you know, I don't know how much it's been in consideration yet because I attempted to go to one of the meetings and they said it was closed session and then somebody else said, well, you should have just gone. And I said, well, I don't just do that. But anyhow, I hope we're considering using some green, rebuilding, you know, and try to make it as efficient as possible. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, yes, you're the last person to answer that question. And with six candidates, the time goes quickly, so we run out of time for further questions from the audience. And it's now time for the closing comments from the candidates. These are limited to two minutes apiece and we will begin the closing statements with Maxie.
In closing, I would again like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing this forum to be held and for me to participate. I have a proven track record of working for the city of Athens. With my experience, dedication, vision, and integrity, I will bring a vast background of knowledge and insight to Athens City Council. As an active community member and a small business owner for the past 32 years in Athens, I am committed to continuing the Smart Growth and Infrastructure Guidelines set forth by the Comprehensive Plans for Athens and to continue the service to our town. I ask for your vote so that I may serve on City Council. Thank you.
Our next statement will be from Peter.
Right. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight and sticking me in the hot seat here for about an hour. This has been a new process for me. This has been an exciting last few months. It's been a lot of fun. I've really enjoyed the process. When I went and collected my signatures, you know, I felt I had a perspective. Someone who's lived in three of the four wars, who's grown up here and has been through that process of growing up and having a community shape you. You know, I said, well, council might benefit from that. You know, and then adding my business experience and the ability that we've been able to create something kind of special down on Stimson Avenue, I said, well, that would be good too. What has really surprised me by this whole process has been the conversations I've had with community members, with people currently working for the city, for people that are on council, former council members, former commissioners, current, I mean, I've talked with a lot of people and I've really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed hearing those perspectives and I've enjoyed just the whole process. So I want to thank the city of Athens for once again providing me with another experience. You know, I'm really indebted to this community and I would like to have the ability to serve on council. If I don't, I still will be volunteering my time and doing everything that I can to help the community that has given so much to me. Thank you. Thank you.
And Jennifer, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. Some of my goals as a council member for the next session include the realization of the city's sustainability plan and helping to make Athens a healthier place to live, work, and play. I've enjoyed my time serving on the Environment and Sustainability Commission. As I mentioned earlier, one of my weaknesses is eagerness and sometimes impatience. So I often run into the, feel like we're not making progress, but I know from having conversations with other people that we are making progress. And so I look forward to the time when we're able to look back and say, "Look how far we've come." And we can do that in a lot of respects on a lot of different issues, and this will soon be one of them. I will support energy efficiency upgrades and support the work of Upgrade Athens, and I'm glad to have been involved on the ground floor of organizing the Southern Ohio Public Energy Council. It's been a crash course in learning about energy issues, starting with knowing virtually zero to actually knowing how to read my electric bill now. So I'll continue to work on those issues as a city council member. I believe Athens is a town unlike any other in Ohio, and I appreciate the opportunity to represent its residents as we preserve and grow the qualities that keep so many of us here. Unique to Southeast Ohio, Athens provides access to a vibrant food economy, public participatory art, amazing educational opportunities, abundant outdoor recreation, and the acceptance of different cultures' beliefs and ideas. In the next few years, I hope to work with local government, business, and community leaders to help Athens develop more as a sustainable wellness and recreation destination.
I could thank the League for having this and all of you coming out, but I tell you who I'd really like to thank? The five people sitting on either side of me. To run for public office and put yourself out there takes conviction, takes passion, takes a willingness to experience a win, maybe a loss. As Pete said, I think all six of us will continue in some capacity, win or lose. We are all photographers today. Just about everyone in here has a smartphone, takes pictures. You go to towns, you visit, you take pictures. I fly into Washington, DC, always get on the left side of the plane so I can take a picture of the Capitol, the White House, Washington Monument. What a great picture, particularly from 5,000 feet in the air. But do you ever wonder when people come to Athens, what pictures they take to share with their friends when they go back home? Think about it for a minute. I can think of a picture of White's Mill from the Union Street side across the river, particularly when the river's full and the water's cascading over those rocks. Maybe it's a picture of Lynn Hall upon the ridges on a beautiful May morning as the sun comes up. Or maybe, more recent picture, is that wonderful mural of the miners uptown on the side of Lucky's. Think about that. What are the pictures you think people would take? Well, some of the pictures that I envision people taking are pictures of a restored and renovated West Union pedestrian corridor dining area. Right now, it's currently shut down to half. Why not experiment and see if we can prolong that situation? An uptown area with clean sidewalks, free of thousands of dark, nasty-looking pieces of chewing gum, and a new permanent farmers market powered by the sun and accessible to all by East State Street, the bike path.
I also want to take the time to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. I want to thank also the Athens City Central Committee members who voted for me to fill the vacant at-large seat based on my qualifications and experience. I want to thank the Southeast Ohio Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO, for their endorsement I just recently got from them. My goal is to continue coordinating with the city council, Ohio University, and the Athens community to continue building, growing and embracing the partnerships already in existence, and develop new partnerships wherever possible. All I'd say is, is you vote for qualifications, you vote for experience, and I appreciate your vote on May the 7th. Vote for Mike Canterbury, or Meg Fitt, sorry. Vote early, vote often.
This is in Chicago. Jennifer, your closing statement, please.
Well, since my opening statement was so severe, I'll be sweeping my closing. What I love about Athens, well, first, people. And not just people, it's a diversity of people. It's a place where class structure breaks down, racial categories don't seem to exist. There's an incorporation here that is, it kind of creeps into you and maybe that's why we stay here. And so I have a list of things, and I'm probably singing to the choir, but let me list my few things in categories. Food, coffee, beer, trees, neighborhood gardens, and walking, movies, theaters, art projects. And hopefully, a city that will be known in the future for its solar projects, which would be one of my goals to work towards if elected to city council. Thank you all for coming.
I'm very sorry for my late and dramatic arrival. I probably gave poor Ann a heart attack, but I made it eventually, and I'm very glad I did. It's been, as Elsewhere always says when he moderates on these occasions, it's been a wonderful exercise in civil discourse and in democracy. David McCoy has asked that I announce that there are copies of the voter's guide at the back of the room, so please pick up one of those if you haven't already. I'd like to thank the library for cosponsoring this event with the League of Women Voters of Athens County and the community center for allowing us to be here in this venue. Thank you to the media very much for your excellent questions, to the audience for your excellent questions, and very much thank you to the candidates. So please remember, everyone, to go out and vote on the fifth. Okay, thank you.